Good afternoon, good evening everyone. Thank you all for coming out on a silly call Tuesday evening. I'm going to entertain a motion to open from my floor.
Motion to open, second.
On paper, aye. We're going to move it to the Capitolway.
Okay.
I'm going to actually alert you all to open and then we'll sort of...
Municipal building.
I'm sorry.
Gladly, you want to take over again?
I'm sorry about that.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Chairperson Alicia Greco, members of the Select Board, Finance Committee, Planning Board, and Capital Planning Committee. Welcome. My name is Bob Connors. On behalf of the Municipal Building Committee, I'm submitting this update regarding the schedule, local permitting approvals, current estimate of probable cost, proposed building locations, schematic layout in previous meeting minutes. Eleven years ago, the Public Safety Site Selection Committee, which a few of us were on at the time...
Excuse me, Bob. Can we open? Yeah. All the boards and committees open, then we'll salute the flag, then you repeat.
Okay.
That sound okay?
Yeah, why don't I reset?
No, this slide won't open. Why doesn't the Municipal Building Committee open next?
Okay, I called the meeting to order. That's all we do.
Okay, you don't open today. Erica?
We do a roll call. We have a quorum established, six out of seven members here. So, Marshall?
Yep.
Erica Davidson here.
This is Charlie.
Susan Rice.
Thank you, Charlie.
So, Capital Planning, you're going to...
Capital Planning, we have two people here. We do not have a quorum. I'm Gary DeMore, and I'm Jesse. And McGor.
And Ian.
And I'll call the Planning Board meeting board. I'm Larry Murphy, Chair, and President Peter Pinkos. Leslie Matthews and Woody Henry are present. We do have a quorum.
Thank you. Let's salute the flag. Our question is...
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where whose hands one nation, united by the universal which always is just as strong.
Thank you, everyone. If you could just please mute your cell phones. Now, I'm going to hand it over to the Chair of the Municipal Building Committee, Mr. Robert Connors.
Why don't I try this again?
How about...
Good evening, everyone. I'll save some of the formalities and get into the meetings. On behalf of the Municipal Building Committee, I'm submitting this update regarding the schedule, local permitting approvals, current estimate of probable cost, proposed building location, schematic layout, and previous meeting minutes. Eleven years ago, the Public Safety Site Selection Committee was tasked with reviewing all available site options for locating in the police station, indoor combining town hall, fire station, police station safety complex, and reporting back to the selectmen. The town residents rejected the public safety complex option. Six years ago, town meeting authorized a standalone police station at Seven Morgan Avenue with any remaining funds to undertake the remodeling or extraordinary repairs to Twenty-Five High Road to meet the needs of town hall. Four years ago, a town meeting authorized the increased expenditure from $6.5 million to $8.2 million to construct a standalone police station. All right. Question. When extraordinary alterations and a major addition will cost more than new construction? Renovating an older building to meet current building codes, ADA requirements, life safety standards, health codes will be more expensive than building a new structure. Renovations can also result in unexpected costs and delays due to unforeseen conditions or surprises that may arise during construction. Additionally, adding a new addition to an existing older building can pose challenges related to access de-riz in floor elevation. Existing conditions at Twenty-Five High Road. Existing exterior walls at a two-by-four construction with about nine foot in floor-to-ceiling height on the main level, which is insufficient to house the required MEP HBAC sprinkler systems, which require about thirty inches clear space above a finished ceiling. The ground level has a combination of different types of exterior walls and a low ceiling height of seven foot four, which does not provide enough space for MEP HBAC sprinkler system and a finished ceiling. State Building Code requires a minimum of seven foot six finished ceiling height to be habitable office space for town employees. Interior walls, surface finishes include drywall, homosot as painted walls. Majority of the walls are load-bearing. Interior doors are a combination of fire-rated doors and unrated hollow doors with wood jams. Exterior windows are at the end of their useful life and do not meet the current energy code. Existing wiring is a combination of, excuse me, old BX, ROMX, and some metal clad wiring, which will require updating to meet the Electrical Code requirements for municipal public assembly buildings. Bathroom facilities do not meet the current public code, fixture count, and floor drain requirements. Heating and cooling system lacks, among other things, energy recovery ventilators as required by the current stretch energy code adopted by the town of Newbury. Usable floor area for programming needs. The current structure at Twenty-Five High Road with front entry steps in the ADA ramp has a footprint of above 4,000 square feet. This level has about 3,100 square feet. The basement area ceiling height precludes use for programming needs but would be available for MEP HBAC requirements. The footprint is suitable... The footprint of a suitable addition is 6,400 square feet, would require a two-story, 3,200-square-foot addition resulting in a 6,300 square footprint, eliminating more parking spaces than the proposed new building footprint of 5,200 square feet. Option one, raise renovate, expand the existing with a 6,400-square-foot addition. Two options for expanding the building, raising the upper level and installing a new foundation or lowering the slab. Both options have potential drawbacks and costs. Rising the upper level and installing a new foundation would provide much... would provide more headroom, but could create access issues. Additionally, the cost would likely be at least the cost per square foot of new construction or even higher. Lowering the slab could also have drawbacks, including potential water table issues and high costs to avoid those issues. It should be noted that all new work must comply, additions and new work within existing, and anything existing that was altered must comply with the current building code requirements. Option two, new replacement structures. Building a new two-and-a-half-story town hall to meet the programming needs that will address Newbury's projected growth over the next thirty years. Twenty-Five High Road is situated in the heart of the Newbury historic district. The district is home to a variety of important community structures, including residential, civic, educational... religious, cultural, and commercial buildings. The district buildings have served as the community center of Newbury for many years and is a fitting location for the long-awaited Newbury Town Hall project. It will help to preserve and enhance this historic district for years to come. The Municipal Building Committee recommends option two as the most cost-effective, aesthetically compatible with the neighborhood, and would reduce potential traffic flow problems, reduce the number of curb cuts and cars backing out onto Morgan Avenue. Project status. The committee is working to deliver plans for construction of innovative town halls that will meet the programming needs of a 21st century town hall. It will address Newbury's projected growth over the next thirty years. We are working with all department heads, the Planning Board, Conservation Commission, to analyze and expedite local approvals to meet the projected bid release in November of 2023. The project has complete schematic design phase. The project architect has awarded an updated project estimate prepared by A.M. Bogety, which will be available in mid-March. Project schedule. Early March is the timing date for release of schematic design drawings, and mid-March for the schematic design cost estimate to the Select Board for consideration at the annual town meeting, April 25th, and the debt exclusion vote on May 9th. November 2023 is the target date for bid documents. January 2024 is the target date for awarding a contract and notice to proceed. Estimate of probable cost. Currently, the committee's estimate of probable cost is based on available information as follows. Excuse me, I'm going to have a little sip of water here right now. It's frogging my throat. Estimate of probable cost. Construction cost: $8,223,000. Project costs, which include designer, OPM, testing, and commissioning cost: $1,427,500. FFNE security guard access: $599,000. Project-related expenses: $56,000. Project contingency: $635,775. Estimate of probable cost total: $10,885,275. The next page is the chart that the selectmen had provided us when we organized back in September. If you turn to the X tab, it's the project schedule. The executive summary that I just presented, the rest of these tabs add back up to that as far as... This is the complete schedule that we were anticipating. And certainly, schedule is always subject to what decisions the Select Board makes, what decisions town meeting makes, and certainly what voters decide. If you turn to tab three, this is a draft summary of local approval permitting summary. This existing condition summary is for the Old Town Hall building located at Twenty-Five High Road. Cassiak, Alaska, and D'Souza Consulting Engineers, Inc. is preparing an updated civil summary due in mid-March. Within this tab, it gives you existing soil conditions, zoning, the water supply that's available, the sewer supply that's available, an analysis of the drainage system, natural gas service that is available, soil conditions and testing, wetland resource areas, natural heritage and endangered species program, flood zone. I'm happy to report that we had geotechnical borings performed approximately a month ago. And the result came back that all the soils will support a standard foundation to put. If you recall, at the police station, we were required to use GeoPierce because the soil conditions were less than adequate for conventional foundation. If we turn to tab four, that is the breakdown on the schedule of probable cost. It should be noted that in the... we carry a 4% escalation cost on construction and a 7% project contingency. Certainly, to predict what the cost will be in November, we can only look back. So, you're going to hear... This is the best estimate of what the cost does make. In the next week or so, we will have a third party event to provide an independent estimate of cost, schematic design cost. But the true estimate of cost will be when the bid results come in. So, there'll be two more updates on this project in a week or two, which the Select Board and all the committees will use to make their determinations. And then, if this progresses to bid, when the filed sub bids and general contract of bids come in, you will have what is going to cost us. Okay, if you turn to tab five. We, at the selectmen's presentation back on Valentine's Day, as Dana reminded me the other day, we talked about all the new construction. And because this has been going on since 2012, there were a lot of efforts, discussions, reviews, analysis of what could be done with the existing building. Could it be expanded? How could we repurpose that? So, I thought it would be proper to expand on that. So, this first page, the picture you're looking at was the original Grange Hall that was built in the late 1800s. The history of this site is a little spotty. We actually had the building department go back as far as they could with records, and we didn't get too far. So, the best we can calculate is the... Matt, if you turn to go to the back of the last page, so you can look at three pictures. Back one. So, the top picture is the original Grange Hall that burnt down, as best we can tell, to a record in 1927. The second picture was Town Hall that was built after the fire, and it was sold to the town from the Grange in 1937. And the bottom picture is the same structure, but in 1977, there was an addition to the left-hand side. And I'm assuming that's probably when the police department was moved downstairs. But it's still a little spotty. We don't have a clear picture of the chronological history of that. So, if you turn to the next page in your tab, this gives you the picture that you just said. Okay. When you get to the next page, you'll see the... what shows up on Newbury GIS showing the existing footprint of Town Hall with the zoning. And we go to the next page. The question was, did we ever look at, was there ever any consideration on renovating, expanding the existing building? So, back in 2018, Context Design Group was contracted to do a preliminary research on this. So, this is what they came back to. You can see the existing building, and then an addition up the back that would meet the programming needs of the town back in 2018. If we go to the next page... No, actually, go back to that for one second. What I want to point out is you have three curb cuts on the corner and on High Road, and you have 12 parking spaces that have to now back out along the Morgan Avenue. And when we get to the updated schematic design, you'll notice the difference. Okay, Matt, if we go to the next page. Okay, the next page, that is the upper... The existing upper floor at Twenty-Five High Road with a proposed addition off of the back. And again, it didn't get much farther than this. As I mentioned earlier, the existing instructions that had clearance in the actual overall construction. It was going to be G.U. getting building down to the frame so you can correct all your wiring and energy issues. Elevate it two feet so that you would have habitable space in the basement, and then put on an addition that would be larger than the size of the structure you're attaching to. This all... this was all done back in 2018. The next page is basically what the lower floor plan would be considering, that option. Now, it should be noted, this does not include stairwells or elevators. It was deemed rather early on that it wasn't going to be viable cost wise, so it was not going to be the most economical approach to meet the needs of a town hall. Okay, if we turn to tab six. Tab six, this is what the committee has been working on with Context. So, this is a view down High Road. If you were coming out of Market Street, this would give you a... I think it should be noted, renderings are a modest concept. It... will the lower half be that color? Will this be exactly that? It gives you a visual how it may sit on the line if we go to that in the next level. Matt, if you go to the next slide. This is to be looking up High Road at the corner of Morgan and at the corner of High. Okay, next slide. This should be a familiar plan. This was actually... Context had submitted this, I think, back in June of 2022 with the Select Board when they were re-engaged to take this project on. So, the point now is we have no parking spots backing out on Morgan Avenue, and we have two curb cuts. One is an entrance off of Morgan and a exit off of High Road. Matt, if you go to the next tab. This is more engineering. You get three-dimensional drawings, you get two-dimensional drawings. We were looking at this... This is with the proposed building exactly twenty feet off of High Road. We wanted to see what we would have. The building originally was moved all the way back to the sidewalk by the parking... by the parking spaces. So, these are some of the decisions that civil engineering will tell us where that should go. But that building could be moved back. It's about thirty feet behind the building as you look at it now before you hit to the side. We do need an area for mechanical, air conditioning, generator, but that could be limited to ten feet. But so, there's some flexibility on where that's going to go. But it cannot go any closer than twenty feet to High Road. Matt, if you go to the next slide. Okay, this is your first floor plan. And schematic design is... It's the first step of a three-step process. Schematic design gives us a chance to make sure we have all of the programming needs of staff, storage, meeting accounted for. The next step will be design development. That's after all the boxes are approved out. It's actually what are the final components going to be? And then ultimately, instruction drawings, which is what goes up to bid and actually the structure gets bid and built. So, if you enter the center, you're going to have... I know this is tough to read, but basically... Okay, there you go. So, you're going to walk into the main master building. It was deemed that your treasurer, clerk's office... And Matt, Matt, if you could drop that a little bit. Or... One more. Yep, yep. So, the treasurer, clerk, and assessors were the three active points in Town Hall, where they have most of the traffic outside of probably inspectional services. So, having those located in a central area, easy access, easy in, easy out, made sense. Pat, can you go to the second floor? That's...
Here we go.
One more.
That's... that's second floor. No, that's first floor.
That's directed here.
Second floor.
There, one more. Get one more. There you go.
There you go.
Okay, so now, if you look at this page, you come out of the elevator, and one, in the rear left-hand corner, you have your meeting room. When you come out of the elevator and you walk backwards to High Road, that's where your inspectional service, ISD, conservation, and border health are kind of grouped together. And again, that would be your second probably busiest area traffic floor from the Town Hall. On the first floor, I should have pointed out, one of the things of Town Hall is the different boards and committees, all of us that have been doing this for a while, you collide with schedule. How do four entities meet on a Tuesday night? It just doesn't happen. So, the nights get staggered. What we've done is we've incorporated two large meeting rooms on each end of the building. And so, those would be meeting rooms where the Finance Committee could be meeting on a Tuesday night while the Select Board is meeting, or the Zoning Board of Appeals. Depending on what public warrants are being handled by the different committees will be what size room you possibly get. Matt, if you go back to the second floor. And on the second floor, we have... We have a meeting room, but it's more for staff meeting. Select Board may be using it. We've actually incorporated a Select Board meeting room so that... I mean, as we all know, we go to a meeting. Before the meeting is open, we can't have a quorum. We can't have more than... Minimum number of people sitting together. So, having a Select Board meeting room in another conference room like that, people could come in, prepare for a meeting without challenge hitting the open meeting button. We all try those boards. Okay, Pat, go to the third floor. So, the third floor, we're utilizing the attic area. High Road has hiked on water. The existing building, we've had flooding, a number of issues with that. And so, the... Putting all the mechanicals and storage in the attic area, so the footprint we lost having a full basement, we've just converted the attic area in to utilize that. Currently, the town rents, I think it's five or six storage containers over at Kent Wade for records. And it's costing us, I think, about thirteen or fourteen hundred dollars a month. By utilizing this approach, we can recapture a lot of that storage and have it in-house. And there's other ways to optimize storage, as we all know. But the mechanical areas will be up there. And actually, you're seeing more building codes requiring... Nobody wants you putting any mechanicals in the basement. That would project the sea level rise, storm changes. Having mechanicals in your basement that is subject to flooding. Major buildings now are having them on the second floor for that very reason, so that they don't lose, you know, their infrastructure. So, tab seven. We won't bore you with the details on that. It is all about meeting minutes. We'll give you kind of a chronological history of our meetings and the content. And we've incorporated questions from the public in that. And there's a forty-page meeting packet for every set of meeting minutes, but it would look like the dictionary. Webster's dictionary. On tab eight, it's a collection of documents that... For questions. So, the first page, back in May of 2012, actually a report that I had done, and identified deficiencies of the basement areas of the police station. The next one. October 2015, indoor air quality assessment, Homewold, Massachusetts. And again, these have volumes of pages with it. But that's the thing, the history of... We've had some ongoing... But it's, that's the thing, the history of, we've had some ongoing issues with town hall. And certainly, we've had to address it. And it's funny, when you go back and you start looking at some of the history and some of the old articles. The debate continues on a new police station town hall building project, September 4th, 2018. We're now box seven, 2023. I hate to tell you what the cost has gone up in that town hall. One of the, one of the issues we had looked at on site selection, there were a number of different lots that had been looked at, a lot of them were town-owned property. It was a meeting in this very library in 2014, many of us were here. And we considered, we considered many, many different sites, and there's a lot of good suggestions and new ideas. The one thing we all left with that night that we were in agreement with is that before you would spend money on a capital project, a critical facility, that it should have a minimum sewer and water as a public source. And that was the one thing we all agreed on. What that did was, it limited our options to three hundred percent. The Governor's Academy was interested in having a police station. We had Byfield Water District over there, and when they had an onsite treatment plant. It had its challenges because the lothead ledge, it was about a thousand feet from the proposed area where we could tie into their wastewater treatment plant. And ultimately, their capacity, they are at capacity limits. So we moved on to, there was a site off of Hanover Street. It's a Walton Lynn, that's what that is, and it's another town-owned property. And it was, there's sewer over there, there's water over there. And back in 2021, the town hired a wrestling consultant to look at that property with their current conservation agent, his name was Bill Holt. And they walked the site, and what they determined was, it was a website, but there were areas of upland of certain size, but none of them were sufficient in size to handle the needs of the council on aging. And I included the space needs study that the council on aging had. And this was, I always thought, to be honest, where there was a three or four thousand square foot building. The space needs was ninety-eight hundred square feet. And so based on that, and if you turn to, there's a conservation email here from the conservation agent talking about Bill Seckham, Patrick Seckham. We eliminated that site because if it wasn't going to be suitable for a council on aging, town hall was going to be of equal size or bigger. And another big concern was, you'd go by the round school at eight-thirty in the morning, and it pulled buses. And when the council or aging were there, they were aligned, schedules were aligned, everybody probably knew when to go and when not to go. Town hall operations are different, people are in there all day long, in and out, first thing in the morning. And so that put us back onto a path of twenty-five High Road. We gave you all of the existing utilities of the civil work that had already been done. Twenty-one High, twenty-five High Road actually had a Phase One, twenty-one E test. Now, that's for environment, affect the environmental waste in that. And that is completed, and no further testing was required on twenty-five High Road. And the last addition was a programming needs comparison for town hall. Dana, why don't you go through the different sites? I know these are questions people have, and Dana was our resident author of eight to ten sites that we had talked about.
For my map? No. I did, I did present this during one of the select board meetings. As a matter of fact, it was on Valentine's Day that I went through this. And I'm going to start, well, I'm going to start at the first site on the map. It's, the address is 320 Newburyport Turnpike, which is the Governor's site. And the, I think, it hasn't, can come back to us because of the fact that we now have a police station on Morgan Avenue. And the Governors was, was very interested in having the police station built on their property. And, and the reason for that was for security, for marketing, for the school. And when, when we, and I'm not saying it's not possible, but when we decided to build our own police station, where we built it, the enthusiasm that the Governors had sort of, sort of went away. And I really don't even know right now if it would even be up, if it would be offered to us again. And, you know, Bob talked about the, the issues with the sewer bridge and, and running the, you know, sewer line from that site. The lot itself, I happen to practically live right across the river there. And it's, it's very close to, when you cross the Route One Bridge, go, I'm sorry, when you cross the Parker River Bridge on Route One going southbound, it's almost immediately on, on the right, right, right on that corner was the, was the original lot that was being considered to let us use. And, I mean, when you continue to drive down towards the Governors, I don't know how far it is, but it's a quarter to a half a mile away to where their sewer system is located. So any of it, I don't consider that a viable option anymore. I, I, I mean, you know. The next one I want to talk about is, it's actually, it's, it's on the corner of Boston Road and Route One. And it's right beside where you see Newbury Storage right now. And the piece of property is owned by Bill D. Francisco. And I've talked to him about, the piece of property is for sale. He wanted to put, as a matter of fact, I think Prime Fuel offered him about nine hundred thousand dollars for that lot. And he actually turned it down. So again, it would have to be looked at as far as the Conservation Commission goes on the viability of whether there's enough dry land there for the space needs that we need. And I'm sorry to say, there's no sewerage or water on that site. So we would have to draw wells and put in a septic system if we were going to utilize that site. It's a great location, I think everyone would, can agree to that, that it's a great central location. It's on Route One, its traffic accessibility would be, would be fabulous, so on and so forth. But again, you know, that's all, that's all really I can say about it. The next location was on the corner of Hanover Street and Route One, which used to be where Holistic Family Practice was located. I happen, Dr. March happens to be my personal family doctor, so I actually, I know him personally. And we, we talked about how nice it would be if Newbury would just buy that building when, when he was trying to sell it. The issues that we found there, I believe it has city water and sewage? Does Eric, you know? No? It does not? Okay, and then, it, it, it does have an elevator. The layout of the building on the, on the interior would really need some serious modifications in order to fit all of the things that, that the town hall is going to need. And the, another major issue was parking. If anybody who's been there, you know, there might be fifteen parking spots, I, I don't know. But that, but that was another, another area that we looked at. Then, of course, the infamous Walton Avenue, Bob just talked about that. I mean, it's a good location, it's got sewerage and water, but I, I don't think, you know, when you're talking about the COA, I'm not sure of the actual layout of the land and how much space is there. It's like, I think that would have to be investigated a little bit more. I think when you start talking about the, the school conflicts with the town hall and the buses and the street accessibility, I would favor it more for the COA than I would a town hall, only because you're not going to get any curb appeal there. And that might not be important to a lot of people, but personally, I, I, I think that if we're going to spend this kind of money on a town hall, you want to kind of show it off. I don't know if anybody would agree with that. And at that location, no one's going to, when you drive by, you're not even probably going to see the building. But that was, that was another location that we, that we looked at. Let's see, where am I? Then, of course, we got twenty-five High Road, we all know where that is, that, that is a location. One that I just happened to pick out on my own was, was the old Woodbridge School. I know it's not available right now. It was available at one point in time, and I don't know, I mean, it did have to be a lot of studies to take place before we would figure out even if, if at that time, you know, looking back in hindsight, did we make a mistake in allowing that building to go? That's debatable, you could debate that either way. But it was something that I put a pin on my map because I thought it was worth talking about. Oh, and then the last one I have here, Bob kind of helped me out a little bit with this one, but it was the building that's sitting right in front of the Rusty Can is, you know, was also a consideration, well, I don't know if it was a consideration or not, but we talked about it. Eric knows a little more about that, I think.
That was true.
Right. You know, is, is that available? I, I don't know, it's, we've talked about it. Getting back to the location, you know, it's like people, I like the term when you're talking about property, you know, location, location, location. Really ought to be, I think, probably one of the most important things that you look at. And getting back to, you know, downtown Byfield probably isn't the best location when you want to talk about being geographically centered in the town of Newbury. Again, that's debatable, obviously. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Dana.
Oh, oh, wait a minute, one more that I didn't put on my map is the town forward section, which is not on my map, I left that out last time too, which is right beside where the transfer station is now. There's, there's quite, you know, the town owns a big piece of property there. But again, you got to, you got to get back to water, sewerage, accessibility, traffic. You know, it, it's, it's a location, it's worth consideration. But I, I, I don't, I don't think it's a viable option. It didn't perk? Yeah. So that's it.
Back in 2012, there were a couple of other sites. Dana mentioned the Woodbridge School, Mansion Field, Byfield Library, and then a combined town hall, police, fire station at the twenty-five High Road complex. And then the usual caveat, or a site could be determined. Eleven years later, we're, we're recommending twenty-five High Road. Chairperson, that is our presentation, we're available to ask questions.
No, thank you very much. You guys have done a tremendous amount of work on this, and it's greatly appreciated. And I'm going to start with the finance committee, see if anybody in the finance committee has any questions with the building today.
Let's fix all this time.
I, I.
I still haven't got the numbers.
I figured the next numbers, but I appreciate the diligence and attention to detail this committee has put forth and understanding the historic context of some of these decisions over the years. There've been more than a few meetings in this room on this topic, and the twenty-five High Road seems to be where we end up every time we go through this, so.
It, it checks all the boxes. And, I mean, for me, it is the center of the Newbury Historic District. And, you know, our, our founders of our town put a lot of time and effort to give us this great little community we get to call home. And I, I think that you miss it, we didn't locate our town hall within the historicness of the upper grade.
How about the planning board? Mr. Chairman, you have a board, any question?
When do we expect the hard numbers to come in?
Mid-March, so we're somewhere between the fourteenth and the seventeenth of March, Leslie.
Do we have any hard numbers on what the renovation or addition on your town hall would be in comparison to?
We, we, we're not doing a separate estimate on that because we didn't go through schematic design. The architects analyzed that and recorded back in 2018. It would be equal or more expensive than new construction. And, and that's where that process started.
Your estimated, estimated probable cause of, to erect a new building to twenty-five High Road, does that include the cost of raising the old building?
No, that, that would be, the old building would be removed, and this would be a brand-new building.
I understand that, but when, when I'm talking about your cost of your ten point eight million, is that the demolition of the old building? And I'm supposed to, do you have any estimates now, again, using these figures of the estimated annual debt service?
No, that would be, I think, a question for Tracy. How we came up with the probable cause was, the architects looked back over the last six months at bids that have come in. I think we can all assume that it was probably a highly inflated time, supply chain issues, sure would reduce the materials and labor. So we're carrying six hundred and forty dollars a square foot, which takes my bracket away, that just even other, other than that number. See, the next reality check will be the schematic design estimate by a third-party firm. And that will either prove that we're in the ballpark or we're low or we're high. But, but at the end of the day, it's, when it goes to bid, it's really who's looking for a project? What's the workload? And I'll give you an example on the police station. The bids, the low bidder was a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars below the next bidder. The highest bidder was a million two over that on the same project. So you had a range of almost a million four on, on one building at that time. What that tells me, and what would tell anyone in the business, the person who was a little bit needed a project, wanted a project. The person that's been a million four over, had a full schedule, if they got it, they were going to be, you know, justly, justly rewarded for doing. were going to be, you know, justly, justly rewarded for doing it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Bob, what did you think of the numbers?
Yeah, you, you know what? I, I think we've seen the stabilization of costs, Joe. What I'm not seeing is continued rapid inflation. Will it come down thirty percent? I've been doing this a long time. They go up like a rocket and then they'll stagnate for eighteen, twenty-four months and then they'll go back to creeping up to a three percent one way or the other. But, uh, I think we're, we're in the ballpark. We're, we're not, this wasn't an exercise that let's keep the number as small as we can, let's just prepare for what it's going to be. But in the, the next week or two, we'll know. And to be able to update the schedule, uh, probable cost is not a big, it's plug it in one number, not a lot of.
Good question for you. On the, uh, on the construction, uh, are there variances in the type of construction? In other words, this is built in place, is there anything? Uh, I know a lot of stuff and we, we do some, uh, that comes modular, built off, and it's a savings in, if you can use it.
We did look at modular previously for past buildings and the repetition in size. We don't have the size. If we were doing something that had more repetition to it?
Yep.
Then the module would fit and the module would work and the module would stack where we don't just quite have the program, we're trying to keep it as small as possible if you don't have enough.
Okay. Thank you.
The, the hard part when you're using a per-square-foot cost on a ten thousand square-foot building, it's really not apples for apples. If you're building a fifty or eighty thousand square-foot building and it's five hundred and thirty dollars a square foot, that's a real number because you've amortized all of your costs over that square footage. Now, your mobilization cost, the general conditions that start out, you know, the, the OPM cost, whether this project is eight million dollars, a thirty million dollars, exactly the same, you could buy it in one time. Over a fifty thousand square-foot building, that cost starts to shrink dramatically.
As a percentage?
As a percentage.
So, uh, if I've got my numbers right, if you take out the storage space, we're at about a thousand dollars a square foot, which, um, I'm not questioning the number on, but how does that compare with other municipal buildings that have been built recently?
Well, that's the, that's the basis of our number. It has been successful bids that have closed, uh, in the last six months that the architect then analyzed and then determined that it, it netted out at six hundred and forty dollars a square foot. And that was the recommended number to you. We're looking in the rear view, trying to look over the horizon at the same time.
Can I ask the Capitol Planning Committee a question? Do you guys have a schedule of our capital needs, right?
Yes, we do.
Can you speak to a little bit about the town hall project?
Well, yes. Okay. There, there's a schedule of capital needs and we have a, a capital improvement program to present to the select for this year. Uh, and the town hall is one of the elements in it, but one of the things that when development continues to develop is the needs for capital improvements in the town. That includes schools, it includes municipal buildings such as the, uh, uh, DPW facility, which is old and rescued at least once. Um, the needs of the town are, um, they're, they're quite real. We have been, uh, thrown out of buildings because they don't meet the standards of life safety before. And so this is going to be an ongoing part of the capital expenditures and capital planning for the town forever. And then, and, and I have to say, the fact that we have been able to save some money, put some money aside for this, I think shows the ability of the town to plan and plan well with future because those are things, they save us a lot of money. And it's, it's the statement of the town that we're here for the long run without need. And so to take care of the needs of the town, we have to do these savings, have these plans. And we are going to have capital expenditures come up all the time.
But we have a plan for it.
Yes, we do have a plan.
They would plan it.
And we plan for it and we renew that plan every five years.
Thank you.
And to that end, um, to follow up on Marshall's point about having money set aside, um, the voters at town meeting over the past few years have voted to establish and then fund a town hall project account, which right now has four point six million dollars in it. So that is money that voters who come and have been at town meeting each time have voted to keep funding that with some of our excesses from like when projects have, we have not spent everything, projects have come in under budget. So thereby helping us with the cost of this, we're going to do it in a way that most municipalities have never done, that they don't usually set aside, it's usually all goes out to bond. This is one where we could use, why go of the town at town meeting to use these funds towards this project? It would be setting up in every way to be doing this.
And we'd be looking for more for the next project coming down the line.
Exactly.
Because we know that they're going to happen.
Right. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, can I ask a question? Um, the, 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 the big picture capital plan is certainly a, a concern of mine also. And, um, I know of upcoming projects, uh, like NES, uh, this, which is the Newbury Elementary School. And I know that, you know, the HVAC that's going to have to take place there. I know that, uh, you know, Beth has some, got some other improvements. And I, I talked to, I think I've talked to you about, you know, how she can move those projects forward through the Triton Regional School District, which I was totally unaware of. Um, and I, I guess, um, my question would be, is there some kind of, you know, comprehensive one or two pieces of paper where we can look at, and, and I apologize for not already knowing this information, but that we can look at to see those projects that are coming up and which, I, I know that some of them, we've got money pulled away from already partially and some of them we don't. Some of them are going to require a, a, an additional debt exclusion and some of them aren't. And, and I think that that would be really good information for the public to know on, you know, it kind of isolating pinpoint what is coming up in, in the future.
I think you're speaking to the capital plan.
Yeah, okay. So, uh, one, it's a great idea. And I know in, in our business, we look at the capital plans and put aside what we would call, uh, our depreciation schedule, i.e., that is the money that we are going to use when these assets are used up. And we've got a lot of detail from different departments in the town as to when those things are going to be used up. And in some cases, we don't have much detail at all, they just need to use up. But the larger pieces, we can plan on a life of those pieces. And if you want to do budgeting and real budgeting for that, then you would say, this building's fifty years old. How long is it going to be good? How much is it going to cost to replace it? Are we going to put one fifty, you know, that amount aside every year so that when we get down to the end, somebody says, we have to replace this, we saved this much money? You know, it's that kind of planning that, uh, you know, we don't do that, we're doing some of it and we're doing it with this, with this single fund. But, you know, we've replaced trucks, we've replaced heavy equipment, we've replaced buildings. All of that could be in a depreciation schedule or a budget, if you will, for when is it going to die and what's even cost to fix it. What we've been doing as a town is for a lot of these things, we have kept them up for a lot of years, either we've had volunteers, we've had patchwork, we've done a lot of things to make it last a little longer. What we're trying to do with capital budgeting process is identifying all these things so that we know what's coming up, have an idea of that, so it's not so much of a surprise as somebody saying, oh, you know what, this building is not safe, you can't work here.
Right. I, I, I guess, um, the, I think in my own mind, the, the art funds, for example, threw kind of, it, it was, it was a good thing, but it kind of, to me, it threw a monkey wrench into the, over, and I'm just going to use this as one example, uh, the, the weed whacker that we bought for the DPW that was like a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, that was something that I'm assuming was budgeted for in the future, that we were going to, we were going to replace that piece of equipment anyway. And now we just, we all of a sudden just had the money for it and we bought it. So my, my, my question is, is like, the hundred and ninety-five thousand that we were going to put into that piece of equipment, I'm assuming we had a plan for that, where has that money been like rerouted now? Do you know, like, their question?
Okay. Uh, and, and the monies that we put into those things that come up are, are allocated every year going forward. So if that piece of equipment came up, let's say it's a hundred thousand dollars, round figure, okay, then we would say, where's that money coming from? We would go to basically the county administrator and say, this is a replacement item, here's the one that's being replaced, we sell that one or auction it off, we're going to need this, it's going to be free cash, it's going to be something else that we get the cash from. So that's all in our ongoing budget. We have a schedule for, you mean, all the different departments, okay? And they come up and they say, we need this. And they detail it. And then we say, okay, where does it go on the, on the priority rating system that we have for capital planning and where is the money going to come from? And when we do the rating system, you know, we list all of the things that people want to get. If the rating system, you're low in the rating system, you may not get that because we may not have the money for it. Uh, but by and large, we, we do a very good job. And I have to give credit to the town facilities and the town managers, they do a great job, especially the DPW. They can squeeze every bit of life out of a piece of equipment before they sell it through. So they're doing a good job. So I hope, I hope that answers your question.
Yes, it, 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 I, I still would like to see, I, I think, but my point is, is, is this, you know, selling the debt exclusion to buy this piece of property is, 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 is going to take some education throughout the entire community.
What piece of property you want to buy?
The town hall?
Oh, you want a building.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We own the property.
I understand, I understand.
You're buying the building.
But, uh, but yeah, you know, I, I, I think, I think that it's important that the public un- understands a little more about the debt exclusion process and, 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 and what our cost structure's going to really look like over the next five years or so.
It's a great point. And let me go back to when we have done this before. And finance committee has gone around and put on public information sessions with slides, PowerPoint, and, uh, and done this lots and lots of times. And we'll do it again. Okay, not a problem. We'll make it as simple and, and do it as often as you like, with graphs and things to show that, uh, in the past, we've had these things, what has happened at the tax rate, you've seen it go down when the debt exclusions come off. And then when we have to go for another, uh, another bond, those tax rates come up, but they're going to be for a period of time.
The, the underlying piece of any debt exclusion is that it is for, the money gets collected to pay that debt. When that debt is retired, that is no longer a tax on people's tax bill. We will vote, once we have the more solid numbers, then that will go, Tracy will, then also our town administrator, will work with bound, bond counsel to give us our best estimates based on what we have for, um, available funds. But again, remember, we also still have to, all of this has to go through town meeting to spend the money, appropriate the money at town meeting. And at the polls at the election on, um, May ninth, people have to approve the debt exclusion there. So it's a two-step every time and that's just, and this one is a, we will know those numbers, everything will get built off once we have a better estimate. So writing out anything of what we think an impact to a taxpayer would be today until we have the estimate and we have the advice from bond counsel, who will tell us what that calculations are, then the finance committee can help bring it home a little bit to what is our average household, um, assessment? What would this increase to the tax rate? And we can break it down and we will happily share and come to as many info sessions to help with the facts of what that looks like to the best of our ability.
So this is a process, I want everybody to understand this, this is a process.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
And, that's okay. And, um, you know, the municipal building committee's done a tremendous amount of work. Their first step was to present it to the select board, which they did back on February fourteenth. Next, it's to present it to all the boards and committees that are here tonight. Once we get the number in a couple of weeks, we'll have to determine, um, set the warrant, which is hopefully going to be on March twenty-eighth. And at that point, when we vote that warrant, we'll have numbers and we'll know what the impact is. And then that will go on the warrant and the select board votes that. And then April is here quickly. There's going to be two information sessions in April. Um, the venue is to be determined, the dates are going to be?
April fourteenth and?
Twenty-second, is it?
Or twenty?
I generally, uh, fifteen.
Fifteen and twenty-second, Saturdays.
Okay, April fifteenth and the twenty-second. Um, we'll have two information sessions, we'll be able to have, we'll know more what the project's been cost, we'll know more how we're going to pay for it, we'll know more what the tax impair, impact will be. Um, and then town meeting, we'll go to town meeting on, um, April twenty-four, twenty-fifth rather, and town meeting will decide if they want to invest in this project now or what not. So I guess that's my point, is this is just a process. There.
Madam Chairman, um, two quick questions about the site and the building. I know it's one thing to have warrants who are running by, um, but it's a big deal to have the stubs, the ports to hook into. Do we currently have that on board in there?
Yes. Well, they run, during the police station, it's extended down, side road behind the town hall through the street and a lot more to have with the police station.
Right.
So all the way from the police station, backed up.
Right. So basically, I guess my question is provisions to hook into those pipes, huge deal or not a huge deal?
No, but all the current tax rate gives you all the connections of where they go to the, to the, to the, uh, the, uh, that's the.
Question number two. I started in two thousand fifteen and I've been to a number of meetings before that. But once I was a regular participant, um, one situation we were faced with, certain people, we were actually helping up the stairs, the six or seven steps to get into the current building that's in order now. There was a ramp, but to get up to grade, ramps can only be so steep and it was a long haul. And by the time some people got up the ramp and around the back and into the heating room, they were winded and it wasn't a good situation. And frankly, helping people up the stairs wasn't a good situation either. So when I look at this plan, um, I see much more levels. I, I understand a lot of the hills of geography we see. I understand a lot of the hills of geography we see there now are from old septic systems and things like that. Will we be looking at a more level site? And will the bottom floor have walk-in access or the type of access, a wheelchair or walk-in?
Oh, yes, exactly, it'd be all great. So I think if you, the visual I would take is, you take the grade, the sidewalk and High Road, and the sidewalks on Morgan Avenue.
There is no sidewalk.
And the rare entry to the fire station. That'll be blended into minimal grades.
Thank you, that answers my question.
Daniel, I want to say, because you asked that question specifically of Jeff Shaw. And Jeff Shaw, I think, said that the elevation of the first floor is going to be about a foot higher than the existing basement floor elevation.
It was somewhere...
Plus or minus a foot, eight inches.
The slab that is being, the architects are proposing, is going to be somewhere between the current basement and the first floor. It's going to split the difference in there someplace, because I did ask him that question. I just want to add the side stairway access points, you want to talk about that, right? Would this be an appropriate term to...
Yeah, sure.
Maybe explain how the side stairs, because we, that went through a lot of discussions.
Go to the first floor plan.
Sure.
Okay, so if you look, on the left and right hand, oops, sorry, backpedal, thank you. The stairwells on the right and left half of the building. My human pointer is going to... One of the things, you have parking on the back inside of the proposed building. And so all entryways will be accessible, they'll be accessible by walk and not by ramp. The, one of the things we talked about was the two stairwell doors that have our egress leaving the building, we're going to have set up electronically so that they could also be left open during the day for caught access, so that people entering from the parking lot would not have to walk all the way around to the front of the building. But we could access those two doorways to enter the building. Everything is electrified today, twenty-four hours a day. Some of that has security clearance or access, you use a card swipe to get in. If there were meetings on a particular night, they could be left open electronically. That's just kind of the level of detail that you're just starting to get into. And then when we get into design development, that was the nuts and bolts.
Question on the stairwells. If you leave them open, where's the security?
Yeah, right. Well, the thing is, is it's a public building.
But if they're set up originally as a form of egress for tax purposes, only the...
Well, and they're, it's whatever you want them to be, they're set up as an exit. What we've talked about is that the first floor is open. And the second floor is actually open, because you can go in the front door, go up an elevator, and pretty much go to where you want to. On the design development phase, what we were talking about doing was securing, so you could get into that stairwell, but you couldn't go up to the second floor. You would only be able to enter into the first floor here.
So at the bottom of the stairwell, there would be a door.
So the bottom of the stairwell is actually the grade level of that floor. So you could walk into that stairwell and walk straight up, or you could walk the set of stairs. Or you could come in that way too. These are the refinements that, you know, they evolve over the next phase of design development.
Any other questions?
How many more full-time employees do we have today that are moving to High Road?
I want to say at the last meeting, I don't know if that question was answered, but I want to say that Tracy identified approximately seventeen, sixteen or seventeen employees. My other view?
Seventeen.
Yeah.
But that's not, that's not changed.
Yeah, yeah. I think frankly, what's deceiving is you've got to remember, we had five trailers behind them.
That's blocking them.
Yeah, that were housing, I can't pull the beat myself.
So I don't think that we added any staff, you know, we added our staffing.
We added four, I think.
Since twenty-twelve, maybe, maybe five additions.
We added five additions, we graduated twenty-five five.
Since twenty, no, since twenty-twelve?
Since twenty-twelve.
Yeah, so since we vacate, since we moved to this basement...
The delta of seventeen is because these were used to sit in trailers and outfalls.
I think the big thing is, we're looking over the horizon for thirty years. So you will have labels on offices that do not actually have a person or a staff member walking. Because we're not adding a hundred offices. I think it's important to know, originally offices are municipal atmosphere for a hundred forty, hundred sixty, hundred eighty square feet. The format that the real world today is offices are hundred twenty square feet, admin, part-time staff, some of it this time is not required. Being in town hall, eight hours a day, is going to be a cubicle. So you've gone from a hundred forty to a hundred eighty square feet, to department heads at a hundred twenty square feet, and everyone else down to about sixty-four square feet. There are exceptions to that because obviously municipal government doesn't necessarily operate like institutions. In certain other areas, they require a little more space. That's what's been incorporated here.
Question?
Jeff?
I did want to make note to everyone too, there'll be a lot of questions, there has been a lot of questions. I've certainly in my tenure, slept with that involved in a lot of questions in this process. But I did think it was important to make note of the fact that I was kind of immersed in the police station. I went to a lot of the meetings, I was kind of involved. And we're very lucky that this goes forward at this time, and everything aligns. Eric and John Kelly and Bob, because the police station was an immensely challenging site. And you'll get building committees that are long gone in construction sites, that's under the OPM. And these guys all stayed involved immensely and intensely. And I have to think that the police station, an immensely hard site, came in on budget.
We came in on time, came in on time. And I think the last report we got was four hundred forty thousand on the budget.
And that's unheard of, because I can tell you, there's a lot of other projects, and a lot of other towns in the last five years that have roof problems and a myriad of other things that have been formed over the past.
And I think the challenging thing in the great exposure of the police station was, we broke ground in January of twenty-twenty, COVID started in February fifteenth of twenty-two twenty.
Well, it was a tough start, the allowed conditions were really challenging.
COVID was just, it was unknown territory for everyone. And, but we had a good design team, we had a good general contractor, and we had Eric. And what would we do last month?
Are there any other questions?
Are you taking questions from the public now?
Um, we can.
Okay.
One, two, we don't have a microphone, oh, we do have a microphone.
Yeah, I can hear you.
One, two, come on up.
I'm not going to come up, I'll come up.
Just keep it close.
Deb Woodward, I'm on Green Street. I'm on Green Street, Deb Woodward. I just wanted, I didn't hear anything about Kent Way, where you currently are. And I want to know what kind of analysis was done, what's your way? A cost analysis or something like that? I have a few questions, Al.
So Kent Way, there's rarely been no cost analysis, like if you're looking for something done on a spreadsheet. This, the currently in town rent space there, I think we have a five-year lease for two hundred and twenty thousand, or two hundred thousand dollars a year, roughly. I don't have to remember the right time. And it's going to escalate, that's time, it's not going to slide. Does that answer your question?
What are the chances of buying that building?
Building is not for sale.
He wouldn't take it.
He would take it.
Are you talking about eminent domain?
Well, that's not, I don't have the option.
Yeah, I don't have an appetite to take. Not when we already own the property. What would be the benefit of doing that? When you take something eminent domain, you still need to purchase a fair market value for it. So we have to, we would have to purchase a building where we already have land. I don't understand the benefit of that, maybe I'm missing something.
I didn't say, I didn't say that.
I didn't say take it by eminent domain, I said, has anybody approached...
Fair market value, fair market value is a reasonable number, it's, you know, it's, at least that's true.
I mean, I think...
You know, better than some of the other options I've looked at. It's a number that you need to have to know, to be able to make an honest estimate as to where money should go. I think it's a first reason to allocate.
And if you could easily create a graph where you're showing current rents with the typical cost. I haven't seen the lease, but I'm assuming it's triple net, you know, common air maintenance charges, and we pay all over utilities. And you can project out over the same period of time as your debt service. And what you projected debt service would be, it'd be a good comparison.
And the ramifications you have to pay if anything you want to change.
Oh, yeah, yeah. But I think, you know, we do apples for apples, it's one of those things. And what you find over a twenty-five year period of time is the lines will press. One is going to be static, your annual debt service is going to be static for the term of the debt. And your rent won't be set.
And the other building, when you do a public...
We're entering a time where the April one, every committee has to meet back to public. And Kent Way isn't really set up to handle all of us at the same time. And now, is there available, more available space? Possibly. But I know that we have meeting remote right now. It's funny, when you're doing technical stuff like that, when you're doing it online, all of you get to see what we're looking at, rather than we're sitting at a table, and you can't see what we're looking at in a line. But to try to schedule space on a Tuesday night, when conservation, what nights do you, you know...
Two nights.
No, everyone meets on different nights to try to accommodate building space.
But we do, we have to accommodate somebody, try to have a special meeting, which means we have to optimize.
There were two hundred and six meetings last year in town hall.
Just a statement on eminent domain. Eminent domain can be used when there's a public need and no alternative to that eminent domain. We already have shown that there is an alternative. Eminent domain doesn't, doesn't come into this at all.
I guess I'm not talking about eminent domain, I'm just wondering, has anybody attempted to approach the owner of the building?
No, not yet, no. But thank you for that, hold on, Dale?
I have a similar question. I tend to agree with Frank, that, you know, unless we've had a serious conversation with the owner of the Expo Center and asked them for a long-term lease. Let's just say it's three hundred thousand dollars a year, times thirty years, is nine million dollars. If the life expectancy of this building is thirty years, and we're going to invest ten point eight million, we'll be back here in thirty years, spending another fifty million on the building. We have a building in place that seems to work for the community. And if we could negotiate a long-term contract with them, why haven't we thought of that as an option?
I like that.
Okay, I'll do it. First of all, the design, design life of the building is one thing. What you actually use it for is quite another. I just happen to live in a building that's almost two hundred and fifty years old. I don't know what is designed like this, but we're not allowed to move out of it. Now, when we start with the town hall, and we say, is it on life, what, thirty years, fifty years? But we look at the buildings that we have been in, and it's old a whole lot longer than... And so our upside, and you bring up a good point, but our upside, if you do the life of the building, not the life of the loan, you come up there. That's why people own buildings rather than...
Leases never stay static at a certain number of thirty years, they always do that.
No, that's why I said three hundred thousand, half, under two hundred.
And we started at about a hundred and fifty, and a little over two hundred in five years, which...
I'm talking longer term discussion.
Five years, we could, you know, it's just, and it's triple net, which is taxes, common air maintenance.
One of the other...
But it's easy enough to do, to do an analysis, in all honesty.
Definitely do an analysis. One of the other things to keep in mind too, is that that two hundred thousand comes out of our operating budget every year. So that's money that could be used for services to support the town, public safety positions. That comes out of the operating budget. So it draws down what we have for available funds for actual services, because we're paying for something rather than investing in something that's an asset for the town. So that would be another part of that equation to be considered of. It was part of the equation when we had to move from the town hall space because we did not have enough space for the municipal employees when the trailers were condemned, and we couldn't have them there anymore. So that is a, number one, we can't just move back into twenty-five High Road as it is because it didn't meet the needs. So we had to come up with another, how do we meet the needs there? But we should just look at that, at that operating, what does that mean? We could pay that money out, that could be one way to look at it, out of the operating budget. But that means that there's less money for the available services as we go through over inflation.
Well, it doesn't really matter to me what you want to call it, whether it's an operating budget or it's coming out of our taxes one way or another, two different things.
The operating budget is, if we did an override on the operating budget, it would stay with us forever. If we do a debt exclusion, it stays for the life of the debt, so ten...
Which is what, thirty years or something like that?
It would depend on what the actual bond, what it comes back, and what would be the, what would be the most reasonable? There's two schools of thought. One is that you borrow for the shortest length of time, or that you stretch it out over the entire thirty years, which stretching four million dollars, or five million dollars over thirty years amongst every resident. By their, you know, you start to look at the numbers, and that's where it would really be an interesting calculation as to what this is going to be an impact on our taxes.
And just to, just to Ellen McCarver, I want to be labeled as a, as a, I mean, a domain or health...
Speak up, please.
We are very fortunate to have a vulnerable and involved and educated populace.
Can you speak up?
Can you?
We are fortunate to have people who are both educated and involved in the process of this town and...
Yeah, the head's working here.
Okay, and I bring that point up about having data behind Kent Way because, you know, we're not exceptional, like every other town in the state and country that now. We've got plenty of landmines laying around out there. We have a high school that is in dire shape, right? That's going to cost money one way or the other. We have issues at NES, which, you know, Dana talked about, pushing those projects to try, to which I somewhat sympathize with, said, good luck at this point. Right, we've got a lot of things, we've got, that's not even giving the pension obligation and anything else, a lot of stuff hanging around. And if we don't have our teeth scrawled and our eyes dotted, the proponents of this project will go begging once again, over many years down the road. These, all of this stuff has already come up at town meeting. It's bringing to be prepared to address, to say, yes, this is what the building was cost to do this for sale, this is the only reason we want this, this is what... If we don't have those things, the skeptics will win the day, and understandably so. So that's the reason I bring that up, we should know that those... So that's the reason I bring that up, which you know what those things look like if, uh, if we're really gonna make a case for, for building is suspicious, uneducated. In light of all the things that you could be looking at in very near future. So that's all.
Thank you.
No, I tried to look at how many towns in the Commonwealth rented town halls.
If it was such a good idea, I don't look.
And, and I went to the smallest community, which was when romance, population, it was either three ninety-seven or four ninety-seven. And their current town hall that they own is bigger than our town hall at twenty-five. And it's all brick. So, and, you know, what do you wanna be as a community? Do you wanna be in a shopping mall doing your, your town governments?
Yeah.
Or do you wanna be in the middle of your Newbury Historic District? You know, I, our founding fathers would go over the break.
Yep.
They, we, think of the struggles that come in here in the sixteen hundreds. And some, uh, looking around, we don't have lineage to go back that far. And if, what they had to do to create this town that we get to call home now, I, and we're going to have a town hall and a shopping center. I, I, I'm sorry. That, that doesn't play with me. And I'm a pretty, what to consider as a person, let's have this. You wanna be in a shopping mall or you wanna be in the Newbury Historic District?
Shopping.
That's the difference.
Shopping mall.
Yes. Alicia, I, I sat down at my computer two months ago and I ran a, had a two percent increase and a three percent increase per year to rent town hall for thirty years. It took me an hour. That could be done by somebody next couple of days here in town. Very simple calculation. If I recall, the numbers are for thirty years, at two percent it'd be seven million dollars and after, at three percent it would be eight million dollars. So that, that addresses the first problem. That should be absolutely done. That can even be the selling point for or a selling point against moving ahead. The second part is a telephone call tomorrow to the owner saying, how much will you sell the building for?
Where move now?
Then if he tells you thirty-eight million dollars, it's an easy thank you very much. If he tells, listen, I'll sell the building for you for four or five or six million dollars, another simple solution, quick, easy telephone calls. But they, it's a determining factor whether we move ahead with town hall or, but think about it. Or you turn ninety degrees and go somewhere else. So I guess the question is, maybe in the next few days, the town can get to that.
Yeah, I got it written down. Thank you, Jim. Mike.
Quick question to Bob and committee. Has a traffic study been done on Parker Street, High Road, Morgan Ave, that co, that whole combination?
Right.
Because I'm telling you right now, living there, it's a nightmare. Okay? If you add, if you add a town hall to it, it's gonna make it even worse. You've got Parker Street coming in an angle. We, thank God we closed Green Street, but you got, you got a bank, you got a butchery that's decreased two hundred percent since COVID. We now get the police station, so every, everything comes down. We've got the fire station, okay? So everything, Morgan Avenue has become very, very, and that, many of my neighbors tonight said, they didn't even know the meeting, this meeting existed. Once again, we do a terrible, terrible job of communicating. Okay? People don't know this meeting was existing. They said, you will, they will come to town meeting. But I'm saying, I, we, we're gonna do a better job because you're giving us three, three, week, four weeks to make a decision and you haven't even touched all the bases.
Thanks, Mike.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Come on.
I just have two questions. Is this document online so that other people in town can review this or is this just for the community's here?
There's, there's electronic copy of this, but I think we can wait for else.
Yeah.
I, I actually think it should be online if you're gonna take a town vote for people that aren't here to review it. That was number one.
Will be.
Excuse me?
It will be.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, my other question is, you said, um, the reason for the size of the building was the projected growth of the town over the next thirty years. What is the projected growth of the town over thirty years to accommodate this size of building?
I think it's the projected growth of town government over the next thirty years. One thing you have to.
Oh, okay, cuz that's different than what you said.
No, exactly. I mean, right now, you go back to two thousand, our population could have been sixty-five hundred or at sixty-seven hundred twenty years later. Here's what happened. We used to have a guy named Jim Cashman. He was a tax collector, tax clerk, he was a treasurer. He wore three hats when we were at Pot Time Town Hall. State law doesn't allow that because of conflicts or whatever. That's now three people. That's what you run into with these different compliances that come down the road.
So if that's the case, then what is the projected growth of the town's government over the next thirty years? Because if that's, that's what you're talking about, the size of the town.
It, it's marginally bigger than what we're proposing, uh, what we're proposing.
Marginally? Marginally is an iffy word?
Yeah, there, there are three or four extra offices within ten thousand square feet for potential growth.
And how many meeting rooms were in there?
Uh, there are three meeting rooms, two large conference rooms where a committee could meet, one large meeting room similar to this, uh, for public assembly or for the select ward.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, Bob, you did build in cubicles and things for reducing the size of that building too, which is kind of beautiful for the vision of government. It's done a lot now with schools and classrooms and stuff.
It's done with businesses across the board.
Yeah. Well, you know, Jeff brings up a very good point. It, today, if you're only in the office for a couple of hours, you don't have an office. You have a cubicle that you get to share. You, you come in, do your paperwork if you want. Uh, no family pitches, share the stapler or whatever. And like a pot home inspector, that's what they'll have, uh, and, and other pot town employees.
Just a quick question. First of all, thank you for the presentation. Um, you know, you know, it sounds like a lot of work went into this. Since COVID, there's a trend to sort of downsize in terms of space or carbon footprint in terms of workspace. A lot of people are doing hybrid work models where part of the time working remotely. So it seems like it would follow that there might be less space requirements rather than more time in the body.
Yeah, I think, I think if you go back over the history of this project, the building started out in the sixteen thousands. I mean, it was here, here, and anyone that knows me and this committee, you know, we, we pay the same bills you all pay. And that's why everyone's in a hundred and twenty square foot office with sharing cube. And municipal government is a little different than corporate America, but there's actually a flight now where companies that were totally remote, then I was saying, you're back to work next week and you don't work anymore.
It's interesting, excuse me, I just wanna give you back on that. The offices that are, I've asked for this number and I will try to get it by town, town meeting. The most busiest, physically busiest offices within town hall and how many people use that and what they're doing to go there. Um, I know the town clerk is very, very busy, they're keeper of all of our records, uh, birth certificates, death certificates, marriage certificates, divorce certificate. There's the assets office, there's the building inspector, um, but I'll have all of that for town, for town meeting, but I think that's important. I think there's a lot of work at town hall that, um, just can't be done remotely.
And, and it isn't being done remotely today.
It's still, it's not being.
It's being done in person. No one is, it's all back according to the most recent meetings, is everyone at town hall because it's a public service building and the, the needs, it's more.
So do you want to follow up?
Yeah, I have a second part for my question. What about, it seems like there's a carve-out for storing records and now you're currently, I guess, running space to store records. Why not digitize them?
There's certain records by law that we have to keep for twenty years. And, and again, notice it is, it's the Commonwealth of Mass says, this is what you will now do and that's what you do. And that's, that's a great target and.
It just seems like the way the world is going, let's get rid of paper, digitize it.
I think we use more paper today in a bankless society than, than before.
Dan.
I, I really like the project. I think they've done a nice job in laying it out, but tonight this room is full of the usual suspects who pay close attention to what's happening in town most of the year. Town meeting's not gonna be filled with usual suspects. It's gonna be a lot of people that didn't come tonight. They're going to ask some questions, to Frank's point, they wanna know some comparisons. That's why the Kent Way comparison is good. And I think, uh, you wanna be able to sell this project if this is the best thing for the town. And we have a three hundred people that could go either way based on the mood of the room. I think you have to be prepared for a lot of pushback.
Thank you. Fred?
Yeah. I guess nobody's identifying themselves, so I won't identify myself. It's not a, not a, not a public hearing.
Come on, Fred, you understand.
I got a couple of comments. Number, number one, I'm playing with new hearing aids and it just seems to me like everybody mumbles. I know I have a big voice, but I can hear, I can hear Bob and I can hear Dana and a few people, but people mumble and it's a problem. Uh, that's number one. But, uh, number two, let's see, where was I? Number two. I'm older now. I got off on a, on a tangent here. Oh, Bob, you, uh, you say it's, it's great to have it in the historical part of town. This is not the same town as when town hall was there. This is not the same town. We have Plum Island, I believe you might live there.
I've heard of it.
Well, yeah. With a heck of a lot of people on it. And we have Byfield with a heck of a lot of people in it. And we have Old Town, which hasn't changed dramatically. And, you know, I am disappointed that, that the JRM site was not investigated. Or, or the vet, veteran, veterinary site was not investigated because they're on Route One, they're central to the town and they, they could be available. And, and let's face it, when you come into Newbury, uh, from, from the north, on Route One, what do you see? You see JRM and that represents the town of Newbury. I'd love to see it thawed.
I think, Fred, you, you may have a good point. I, I think the way we looked at it pragmatically is JRM, you gotta buy it, like for a million four, twenty-five High Road is great. Twenty-five High Road, it has water, sewer, gas.
But it's, you know.
And with chair.
Then I, I, you know, I liked, I liked the plan, the, the parking.
That was, that was kind of the pragmatic approach we took.
I like the parking plan. I think it's great. The building is too close to High Road, but you, as you said, you could back it up, so.
That was just the minimum vision.
Yeah. But I, I just, I just, I think the, the time for the site is gone by the, by the course. So any?
May, may, may I cross that a little bit? That, though, though, that's a really good point. And, um, I just wanna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw Martha in on this one. And that is, and JR knows quite a bit about this subject too. We, we have a lot of state mandated housing coming up in the future, which is gonna be an issue for us. And, and, and you need to talk, you need to look at the, you know, where it is in relationship to the train station and the commuter rail, so on and so forth. And I don't wanna say that, I'm gonna pour words in your mouth, I don't wanna say like that we're saving spaces for things. But JRM would be, would be a really good site to put in some public housing, you know, low income housing. They'll meet the needs of, of some of the, of the residences, uh, our younger residences and also fill that requirement with the state that's gonna be coming right around the corner that, that, that we're gonna have some real issues with. So I'm just throwing that out there as if there's, there's other needs for other property in town. Go ahead.
And as part of the site selection studies, those properties that count over in High Road that are commercial now, we would be reducing their tax base if we stayed at the town hall. So that was added as a part of, uh, the site selection.
Okay.
First, I'm waiting over here with the mask.
There any extras of these books? Extra books that you guys are looking at tonight?
There are three right here.
Well, actually, because they're from other members that are out here.
Oh, yeah.
It's going to be online. You'll be able to look at all this on, it's in a PDF that'll be posted.
I know, but I mean, we're having a historical commission meeting on Thursday and I'd like to have you in the face.
I think you should borrow Paro Alicia's.
Okay, Leslie? Just a request, uh, you said we have the information for town meeting, but could we have it? I will have it. Right. Could we have it at the last informational meeting that's gonna be presented? Oh, yeah. In, in, in April? So we can digest it a little bit. Yeah.
Dan.
Thank you very much. I'll stand so everybody can hear. I'll speak directly first to the lease. We have two spaces at the Kent Way. One's called the existing lease and one's called the expansion lease. The COA is expansion, existing is town hall. We're paying right now, we have a lease that expired with the COA in May of twenty-seven. Our existing lease at town hall expires in twenty-four. So in fact, we can't build a new town hall fast enough to, uh, to, if not honor, uh, the existing parameters of what we have for a lease. So in other words, Tracy right now is negotiating a lease for town hall because it will expire in twenty-four. So it's an opportunity, in fact, for the town to ask RJ not only about a combined lease, but an extended lease for two reasons. We put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and have committed five hundred and fifty thousand dollars of ARPA money to the COA space, which will expire in twenty-seven. At twenty-seven, we don't have an answer for where the COA is gonna be going. So more or less, we're gonna sign up the COA for Kent Way again because we made a massive investment there, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to build it out, as well as the three hundred and twenty thousand dollars that will fulfill through ARPA monies, that lease. When that ends in twenty-seven, we don't have a place to, they're, they're going to be there. So what I'm suggesting is, we should be renovating the Old Town Hall, putting COA in the Old Town Hall space properly and responsibly rebuilt. And the eleven thousand square feet that currently is the two spaces, the existing and the expansion space at Kent Way. Eleven thousand is the number that you're seeking for your space needs. Now, we can live it at town hall, COA will have a spot. And while the dust settles for NEAS, Whittier, Triton, and the fire department at Morgan Ave, which needs attention, when those things settle, we can revisit that with our capital expenditures while the town hall is set with a lease for the extended future and we deal with the capital at our hands. That's what I suggest we do because right now, we're negotiating for an extended lease at the town hall now. Why wouldn't we be negotiating further along forward? Furthermore, I don't see an answer for the COA in twenty-seven. Certainly can't send it back to the elementary school, so we're gonna re-up here. Why wouldn't we commit to the space more? Give the COA what it needs in historical Old Town and pivot when the time comes in ten years or so. And allegedly, maybe you'll have some government needs or, fact of the matter is, in two thousand, we had six thousand seven hundred, uh, according to US Census, Census figures, six thousand seven hundred citizens in this town. Two thousand twenty census, we had six thousand seven hundred one. So it's not population that's growing, it's the services we're getting from the government. I say to you, Bob, I take umbrage with multiple conference hall, but, um, builds because to have multiple meetings at the same time prevents citizen engagement. I can't be in two places at once. So if you're having two meetings all over the place, you're a two-hat guy. You're the municipal building chairhead and right now there's a con-con meeting going on that you're not at because you're here. Those things shouldn't take place because they should be spread out so that we all can properly attend witness operations, to use your terms a lot, Felicia, so that we can do it properly. I suggest that the answers are here for us. It's taking the steps to make it happen. We can do it Yankee, we can do it fiscally, prudently, and responsibly. Thank you.
Yes, I had seven questions. I, I see right now, we still have open options. One is to renovate and rebuild, um, that can be done. Let's not say it can't. We can stay at Kent Way or we can take an offer to buy Kent Way. And there may be other options, but this, plus the other option is to move ahead with the proposal being presented. Does anybody know the current interest rate that the town has been borrowing money at later this year?
No.
Have any idea?
No.
No idea at all? No idea at all?
We need to get that from the bottom.
Okay, that's another simple telephone call for our next meeting when we get together. Option two is for the needs over the next twenty years, according to this proposal. Why is this only twenty years?
Thirty years, isn't it?
In the proposal, twice is twenty years.
I think if you look at this, it says thirty.
In that proposal, it says twenty. Now, let's keep moving on.
Well, Jim, let's make sure that shot actually right.
You'll find it in two places, but that's the same one that was published in your packet a week or two ago.
Okay, so.
Does that have one? Page two on the project status, it says over twenty years.
The project status, it says, the committee is working to deliver, I read this earlier, to deliver plans for the construction of an innovative town hall that meets the programmatic needs of a twenty-first century town hall, in all address Newbury's projected growth over the next thirty years.
This one says, this is a.
Yeah, you know, everything gets updated, Jim.
Okay, let me add one more question. Why only thirty years? The building, the building is going to last for fifty or a hundred years.
This is bull and wood chips and egg on.
I don't know if there's a good answer for that, but next time we have a meeting, we should.
What's the point, Jim?
Option two, you say is the most cost effective, but without providing a cost comparison. This makes no sense whatsoever. For eleven million dollars, are the people entitled to a cost comparison? So the people can decide what is the most cost effective?
We've had, we've had a professional architect, a professional builder, that their professional opinion is to renovate, to make, toy them, repair them, renovate, that building at twenty-five High Road will cost more money. So I personally mean and not imply to take taxpayer money into a project that I know is going to give me a number that is not going to be.
Hold on, hold on. With all due respect, without a cost comparison, you have no credibility in that statement. That's not a good statement. That's really an excuse. That's sad, isn't it?
All right, Jim, thank you. Sit down, please.
All the boards.
Are there anybody else that had a meeting?
So we have an open meeting, we can't continue questioning.
If you're going to be rude and insult me, I want you to please sit down.
It's my opinion.
Thank you, Jim. It's my, please sit down. Are there any other?
Another sad commentary to where you run into.
Another? Thank you. Is there anything, any other question? Yes.
Hi, Ray James, Green Street. Just to add to Mr. Colvin's comments or later questions. You know, I realize we have a lot of people, well, maybe not a lot of people, but it seems like a lot of people are at town hall, and a lot of that's mandated by the way the state wants. Sorry, louder. A lot of that's because of the way the state wants us to run the business. Are there any studies going on by the state to look at how to, you know, make either remote work or making the process simple? Do you know of any? Can you find out?
I'm not aware of any. I can, I saw in the municipal, the Massachusetts Municipal Association's fiscal policy committee as well. And I know we look at some things that the state advocates on behalf of all municipalities and Commonwealth. And there are some avenues of getting like buildings that we wanted to have a building association if they need the library for this kind of stuff, but there may be some grant opportunities, but I'm not aware of anything like that. I could bring it up at that meeting if you want to just come over to me at the end and explain to me a little more detail, but exactly what I can ask.
Sure, no, thank you.
As the state continues to require more regulation, it requires more staffing to manage the regulation that becomes unfunded at our level.
Fair, but you did see the state's getting rid of a half a million square feet of office space. Right? Are we increasing or decreasing? Are we increasing or decreasing the amount of office space? Or total space you're proposing to build?
Yeah, the total space we're proposing to build is ten thousand square feet of usable office space. And I think at Kentway, we're in about seventy-five hundred square feet, give or take. But that's not including common areas at Kentway, which we have to include on our scale wells, elevators, matters like that, so.
Okay, I just want to take a minute too, if you don't mind. I worked for the town for a number of years. I was over at town hall. I was in a trailer. I moved this over to Kentway. And in all of the spaces that we were in, Kentway was the most non-functional space for employees. Just want to give you that insider view, being an employee, trying to work in that space and be functional. It was very. Just the spacing, where everyone was, to be able to communicate with somebody that you may need to communicate with on a regular basis, a lot of button down and all around. It just, it was exhausting.
It's an office building that's being adapted to a municipal use type of level. If you go back to page one, when you walk in the front door of town hall, to the right is the treasurer, to the left is the assessor, and straight ahead is the town clerk. You have ninety percent of the people that go to town hall are going to use one of those three windows. And they'll go in the elevator upstairs to the building's front, which is again centrally located. You're not fumbling around looking for stuff. And how things are sequenced, having the treasurer's office and the clerk's office, maybe the vault. Now, there, yeah, I want to give a shout out to Martha. Martha sits in these meetings. She is world renowned. She's a registered architect. And she has provided such adult guidance for us on how, how the building should flow, where spots should be. Can't do that in an existing building. And I think to your point, Susan, that's what you're dealing with, trying to adapt to an existing layout that was never designed to handle the needs of a municipal government.
All right, I think, Jeff, last one?
Real quick, as I hear some of the comments and questions, Bob, it might do us well to incorporate what this building started out for size and how it's been continually scaled down to make all the space work at a minimal level. Because certainly no one has started out with a wish list. This was sixteen thousand square feet, it was like fourteen thousand square feet.
You don't have the sense.
Down, 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 and down, so much as we can get down.
All right, do you have any last comments, Bob?
No, tell me.
Just to get an idea of how big this proposed building is, because there's no dimensions, like on the front or side. How long is that building on High Road?
So look at the footprint, it's fifty-two hundred square feet. The existing town hall that's there now, with the ramp on the side and the steps up front, is about four thousand square feet.
How high is it? The footprint of the building that's being proposed, how long is it across the front of the building on High Road?
If it doesn't show, we can have the data coming.
How high is it?
You're basically taking the police station, two and a half stories, and you're making it, what do you call it when you make the.
Crucifix.
What do they, what do you call it?
Crucifix.
Crucifix.
In fact, one.
So what's the answer? How high is it?
It's going to be a seven, it's police station.
The police station's a hundred by fifty feet, right?
It's five thousand square feet, so it's a rectangular building.
Right. And this building's going to be about the same size?
It's the same square footage, Tony, but as you go back, it's really L-shaped. Or, you know, it has a, actually, you know what? Can you go to tab? Tab six?
The same one on the.
Yeah, tab six. Okay. You see the size of the addition? It's, the police station was basically fifty by a hundred. And if you look at the rear addition on this, the rear L, that needs all current setback and so on. If it's important that you would like to have that added information, it's easy to add.
Actually, I don't know. Do you see one point one? There is a scale on there, and you can graph and see how to do this.
The brothers want us to reduce this thing down to eight and a half by eleven.
Yeah, I can do it.
Yeah, you know it.
I didn't say it was going to be easy.
I think that's an easy dimension to add without.
Well, we have a schematic design with no dimensions on it. It's basic.
Well, you have all the square footage, you have the size of the offices.
I'm trying to get a visual of what this building is going to look like. Tony, when you get to the end of Pod Street, you're looking at it.
If you would like to see, if you have a rendering, I would should look on the side. You did the same thing for the police station. It's not a heavy load to add that dimension for.
We'll have it for town, for town.
These are status update meetings, and what's good about it is some of your questions help us improve the presentation.
I have one more quick question, if you don't mind. Since the grade is going to be changed, if the twenty-five High Road location is approved, will the sewer and water structure that's already in place have to be modified?
Well, the sewer, the bulk will have to be modified because the building is going to be situated and have different connections. But the sewer pump ejector that's there is, can be utilized. So again, where the plumbing comes into the existing building, that won't necessarily align with the new building. The civil engineering board gives us the fact that we have adequate water, adequate sewer, and adequate gas supply to accommodate the building.
So at a different grade, will the pumps be able to work at the same level that they work at this?
They're all ejected, so if it's a force main, they actually all go uphill anyway.
Thank you. All right, I'd like to thank the municipal committee for giving us this update. And I'd like to thank the planning board, the government planning committee, the planning committee, the town staff for being here tonight. And I'd like to thank the public for asking us these questions because that will help us bring this about a presentation through town meeting. And I have no, I want to say the motion to move.